Call the meeting to order. If you would, please stand and join me for the pledge. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of the public, one nation,
I'm going to introduce our clerk of the school board, Michelle Capone. And I want to thank you, Michelle, for being here. You're also filling in for Linda Murphy, our school secretary, which I really appreciate. But we had a question, I guess, or a challenge from one of our community members about the oath of office. And there was a concern that the oath of office could not be heard by the public. So Michelle did a little research, and she is going to address that issue.
So I understand that there was a question about the legality or whether or not the oath of office was given properly. And it is customary for the oath of office to be given orally and simultaneously to multiple appointees or elected officials. I confirmed this, make sure that everything was done according to the law, and it was. And I also have their written affidavit that I signed. So in my opinion, as the clerk of the district, and also having confirmed this with the Secretary of State's office, the elected officials are duly sworn in. So if you have any questions, you can reach out to the Secretary of State's office for any other confirmation that you might want.
Michelle, as I understand it, the legislature is sworn in in the same way. They're sworn in as a group, and individual voices aren't necessarily heard.
That is correct.
That's correct. Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michelle. The next item on the agenda is, this is the reorganization of the board, which normally happens in April after the March election. Due to the delay in voting in Effingham, we delayed this until this June meeting. So this is the reorganization of board. And the first item is the selection of a chair and a vice chair for the coming year. And I entertain a motion for the chair first. Yes, Dr. Jim?
I move that we vote for Jack Robertson. Next chair, please.
Jack Robertson's not here.
No, Jack, wait a minute. I know who I met.
I was going to say, I don't know if Jack would accept.
Probably not.
I second that.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any additional nominations for chair? Really? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of re-electing me for chair for another year? I'll do a roll call vote. Krista? Dana? I'm going a little out of order, so Dana? Yes? Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Tim Eldridge?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Charlene? And I'll abstain from the voting. Thank you. Any nominations for vice chair?
I nominate Jim Pittman.
Second.
He has been moved and seconded for Jim Pittman. Any additional nominations for vice chair? Hearing none. Get a roll call vote on that. Krista? Dana? Jim Pittman?
I'll abstain.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Charlene? And chair votes, I as well. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is going to be the assignment of board committees. I did hear from, I think, two people so far about their board assignments. Please email me with your preferences, and I'll try to place everyone on the committees that they want to be on. Again, we want to have as many committee members as possible, but without having a quorum. So email me, please, and let me know what committees you'd like to be on. Okay, moving on. Agenda review. Anything else on the agenda?
The only thing I would add is that we did have a building and maintenance committee meeting today, so we probably want to add the acceptance of the minutes for the June 7th meeting of the building and maintenance committee. And I believe you should have those in your packet. You probably have not had a chance to look at them since it just happened late this morning. Okay. Well, then, we can wait until next time to have them approved.
All right. Then we'll move on to the acceptance of the minutes that we do have. The first is the finance committee meeting that we held on May 7th. The members present at that meeting were Dr. Jim Manning, Jim Pittman, Dana Strida, and myself. I entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
They're moved. Second.
They're moved by Dr. Jim, seconded by Pittman. Any corrections to that? I don't think so. Okay, all those in favor that were at that meeting, signal by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And I accept that as well. Okay, the next set of minutes is a school board meeting for May 10th. Here are motions.
Motion to approve.
Motioned by Tim, seconded by Stephanie. Stephanie, I'm going to ask you to abstain from that because you weren't on the board yet.
Not officially.
Okay. I'll take another second, please. Second by Krista. I'll do a roll call vote on that. Krista? Dana?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Stephanie, abstention, right. Tim?
Yes.
Wendy?
Abstain.
Abstain. Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Charlene? And chair votes, I as well. Thank you. And the next set of minutes is for our meeting on May 24th, the school board meeting on May 24th.
A motion to approve.
You made the motion, and Jim Pittman, or was it Dana? Jim?
I think it was Dana.
Okay. Dana, sorry. Any errors, corrections, admissions on that?
Just one quick typo. The mask-wearing outdoors down in the motion is to relax the mask, mandate outdoors making in optional should be it. Just a typo.
Okay. Is everyone okay with that correction? It's in the motion. Okay, if everyone's okay with that. Krista? Dana? Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Charlene? And chair votes, I as well. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the manifests. And the manifest being signed tonight for accounts payable is $1,362,792.78. The payroll manifest being signed tonight is $1,925,144.15, for a total of $3,287,936.93. Here are motion to approve. Stephanie made the motion. Okay, any questions on that? Okay, all those in favor. Krista? Dana?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Charlene? And chair votes, I as well. Thank you. Okay, superintendent, you're up.
Thank you, Jack. All right. Tonight, our first item is a very exciting project that I'm very pleased to have our students with us tonight to present and with their teacher, Jen DeCarmo. So Jen and students, would you like to come forward? I'm going to give you a little background while everyone is getting set up. Those of you who were on the board a couple of years ago will remember that I was fortunate enough to be selected to participate in a delegation of superintendents. There were 19 superintendents, plus myself, from across the country who went to China to take a look at the Chinese educational system. It was quite a trip and quite informative, and certainly answered a lot of questions that I had prior to going there. As a result of that trip, I made some connections with a person who had affiliation with a high school in Suzhou City, or Sucho, I should say, for the proper Chinese pronunciation, Sucho City, which is the Venice of China, quite a beautiful city. And we created a curriculum so that students could come to the United States and participate in our high school and graduate with both a diploma from Huangdi High School and Kingswood Regional High School. This was sort of exciting to me because private schools do that all the time, and I certainly thought, gee, whatever a private school can do, why can't a public school do it? So we have our CIVIS, what's called a CIVIS certification, which allows us to have students from other countries participate in our high school. Of course, it would be on a tuition basis, which is another benefit for our district. But certainly culturally, for our students, to have the experience of interacting with students from other countries is priceless. And I had the opportunity to meet with these students about a week ago, to hear what they had learned from the project. And I'm just so thrilled about the work that they have done and the collaboration that they've had, and I'm very excited to have them here tonight. So with that, Mr. Carmo, I will turn it over to you.
I'm Tyler Okla. I'm a sophomore here at Kingswood. With me tonight are Marcella Donido, who's also a sophomore, Jill Caravella, who's a junior, and then Jennifer Marie DeCarmo, who is our team advisor. Over this past summer, we were lucky enough to have been invited to participate in the Youth Ambassador Summer Project, which gave us an incredible opportunity to collaborate with students from China. The theme of the project was named Green Home and aimed at investigating environmental issues either across the globe or locally based. Our team chose to examine the public health system in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. More specifically, we looked at how our different school systems handled reopening facilities while still abiding by government guidelines. Our team was a partnership between Kingswood Regional High School here in Wolfboro, New Hampshire, and Huangdi High School in Huangdi, Jiangsu Province, China. In total, there were nine collaborators, myself, Jill, Marcella, and Mrs. Marie DeCarmo from Kingswood, and then Carol, Edison, and Claire, along with Mr. Lu from Huangdi, as well as our project coordinator, Dr. Paul Wong.
Over the course of May, June, July, and August, the Chinese students and the students from Kingswood Regional would have a meet or two every week to work on a slide presentation and to make decisions about the project. We had certain deadlines that we had to meet, like the ones that are shown above. Individually, the Kingswood Regional students were also emailing the students from Huangdi about certain aspects of the project and just getting to know one another better. Each team would have certain slides to do one day, and then we would all meet and discuss our project and continue getting more insight from the Huangdi students. Eventually, we curated a slideshow for the Board of Education in China and showed the exact outcome that we had started with, the differences in COVID responses between the United States and China.
In China, grades 1 through 9 are tuition-free. After 9th grade, students have to test well on their exam to qualify for a high school education. Around 50% of students qualify for high school. Public schools still charge an enrollment fee, but private high schools are much more expensive. 50% of students that do not qualify for high school attend vocational schools. In China, high schools are rated from 1 to 4 stars. 4 stars is the highest, where the most students attend good colleges.
Here we have a map that we put together that shows, represents the 12-hour time difference between Kingswood and Huangdi. So we have Kingswood over there on the left, and then all the way over on the right is Huangdi. That 12-hour time difference definitely posed some challenges while we were trying to meet. So we ended up meeting via Zoom. It ended up being about 8:00 in the morning, which was 8:00 at night, and that stayed consistent throughout the whole summer while we met.
Suzhou City is known as the Venice of the East. It is where Claire, Edison, and Carol live. Sucho is a very large city with a population of around 10.72 million people. It is famous for its classical gardens, which it has over 60 of. Lake Tai is a very large lake where they pull fish from to sell in their markets. Huangdi High School is the oldest school in the region, founded in 1929. It is a public high school that has 1,668 students enrolled, while at the same time offering a boarding school option. Enrollment costs $200 a year for students. Huangdi High School is a four-star school where 98% of the graduates attend four-year colleges. The other 2% attend community colleges. JHHS offers unique dual-curriculum program. This allows students to travel to the U.S. and learn Chinese high school curricula, allowing them to travel abroad where they can study the United States high school for a year. Claire is a part of this program, which is why she will be joining us at Kingswood sometime next year.
Above are the three products that came out of our research with the Huangdi students. Claire, one of the students from China, created a video combining certain aspects of her school's reopening policies and our overall takeaways from the project, as well as various videos of our collaboration into a cool compilation. Finally, we were included in the Youth Ambassador promotional video with the Chinese students as an advertisement for the Chinese Board of Education. Through our work on the Green Home Project, we gained insight into the global pattern of pandemic outbreaks. For example, here in New Hampshire, by August, we had cases but no major outbreaks yet, whereas most major outbreaks had passed in Suzhou City. Huangdi students shared their experiences about learning in a pandemic and gave us a window to look through to see what reopening policies could be like in Governor Wentworth. They shared that mask protocols, hygiene practices, social distancing, temperature checks, temporary isolation areas, and disinfecting surfaces needed to be in place. And these are many of the protocols that were included in our reopening policies. One significant difference we learned about was that reopening plans for schools in China are regulated by the central government, whereas education is locally controlled in the United States under our federal system. And the final difference is that in China, students had to tell the government where their whereabouts were for contract tracing purposes. This is the video that Claire created with some of our video responses that we shared, as well as a general overview of the Huangdi High School. Full-time, in-person instruction resumed on April 5th, 2021, for Kingswood, at which point our desks were moved from six-feet spacing to three-feet spacing, adding plastic dividers on all desks. Daily health screenings are completed. Masks are required at all Governor Wentworth schools during academic time. The only exception to this rule is during lunch, where students are allowed to take their masks off as long as they are seated. On the other hand, masks are no longer required during athletics outside. Graduation and senior events will also take place, but with some modifications from what was done in the past. At Huangdi, students are no longer wearing masks or social distancing. It is as if COVID-19 never happened. Throughout the day, student temperatures are measured four times, ensuring the safety of their students. Likewise, dig disinfectant is still being used to clean surfaces. In contrast to students not having to wear masks on campus, they are required to still wear them when taking public transportation or in a public area. As of right now, no Huangdi students are vaccinated, since only people ages 18 to 59 are allowed to receive the vaccine. Since they had chosen American names for this project, Claire, Edison, and Carol gave us Chinese names with special meanings which they shared with us. And here are us saying the names that were given to us.
My Chinese name is Chen Yu, which means "person," and it means "snow" in Chinese.
These are reflections from before our school had reopened, right after we had finished this project in August. Learning from the Huangdi students and what their preventative measures were put a different perspective on this pandemic for me. I know that when we go back to school, there needs to be leaders within the student body that set a good example of how important public health practices are. I believe that with this experience Marcella, Tyler, and I have had, we will be those leaders and will continue to grow as global citizens.
I believe that the information the Huangdi students have equipped us with will truly help us in reopening our school, and we will look to their experience in this difficult situation. And I am very excited to meet Claire next year.
I enjoyed getting to know and work with Carol, Claire, and Edison on this project. I feel that the experiences they shared with us will benefit our school when we reopened in the fall and helped me as a school leader. It was really interesting learning about the differences in our cultures throughout the collaborative process. Claire sent us this video introducing herself to our community. We are looking forward to her hopefully coming to Kingswood next year. We believe that as global citizens, it is important to build diverse, inclusive, and intercultural school communities.
Hi, guys. My name is Meng Hanzhu, but you can also call me Claire. I'm 70 years old, and I was born in Jiangsu Province, which is located in the east coast of China. My hometown is Suzhou, a beautiful historic city known for its classic Chinese gardens such as Lang Grove Garden, Lingling Garden, and Sanlam Pavilion. In my spare time, I love reading, playing badminton, and enjoying delicious foods. I also love watching movies and listening to music. I'm excited about my upcoming study abroad, and I hope to improve my English and adapt to American life as soon as possible. I'm so glad to meet you guys and look forward to studying with you.
Before you all take off, you probably were hoping that you wouldn't get any questions, and I promise that any questions would be really easy. So what probably was the most significant thing that you learned that was the difference culturally? Is there one thing that you can identify?
I think that emailing back and forth with them was a little difficult, just especially because their English wasn't as great as it is now, and they've begun to learn, like meeting with us, and just learning about their culture was like, I think, such a good experience for all of us. I just think that was probably the hardest thing for us, was communicating with them outside of the Zooms.
That would very much mirror my experience, because when I was there, I don't think I've ever been out of touch with the district email for 10 days, and I was there for 10 days. And because of the governmental restrictions, I couldn't use Google at all. So I know that you folks probably had to do a lot just to work around what some of the governmental restrictions were, even to communicate.
Yes, even that portion in itself was pretty difficult, because we couldn't just use our normal emails. They had to develop, it was a lot of middleman messenger stuff, so we couldn't just have direct communication with them.
Anything else that you want to comment on?
Something that was very different culturally was that they have a lot of top-down pressure from the Chinese government. So when other schools were going back in the fall, we didn't know what our school reopening plan was going to be, whereas in China, it was already decided for them what their reopening plan was going to be all across the country for all schools. So that was really interesting, that we were...
I think that's really important, because I think that's the fundamental difference between us and countries like China, is that we do have open debate about these issues, and these issues are more locally controlled, and I'm sure that's why many people are here tonight, to give their perspective to our local school board about what should be happening in our local community. So I think that's just a great, great lesson. And I'm so excited that you had that connection with the students, because I think the person-to-person connection is what makes all the difference. I know that the three students that initially thought they were going to be coming with us and spending time with us for a year are reluctant to do so because of the pandemic. And I do think, though, that Claire's family is still interested, and it may not be in September, but she still may be spending some time with us the second semester. So I hope we do. After listening to you, I had the opportunity to talk with you all a week and a half ago, and it was just a great experience for me. And after listening to all of you, I'm more committed than ever to making this happen. So I thank you for your presentation, and I thank you for the welcoming and the warmth that you've given to people from the other side of the world. So thank you, and thank you, Mrs. DeCarmo, very much. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the New Hampshire Learning Initiative. And I'm going to give this just a sort of a general overview, and I know Academic Affairs will talk about it a little bit more in depth. And the two agenda items, B and C, are somewhat related. The ESER, which is the Elementary and Secondary Education Recovery Act, has provided us with an opportunity, because of grant funds, to do some projects that we would not otherwise be able to do. And one of the things that the Academic Affairs Group heard about tonight was wanting to look at our curriculum and have a K through 12 systemic approach to it. So what the New Hampshire Learning Initiative can provide for us is an acceleration of what we really cannot do on our own, because we don't have the internal resources. They would be providing some professional development for our administrative staff, to get our administrative staff on the same page. They would also roll up their sleeves and be working with our grade-level teachers and all through the system to look at not just what is being taught, but how what is being taught is applied. We know that we have very capable students, and we know we have committed families and resources in the district. What we need, I think, is to help our students reach a greater depth of knowledge and greater application of their skills. And so, working with this group, I think we can do this slowly, but I'd rather do it quickly. And we have, like I said, we have the grant resources to do it. So that is really the topic under the New Hampshire Learning Initiative. How that links to Topic C, the ESER Plan, is the amount of the grant funding that we have available and what we're able to use it for. So I'm just going to pass around a framework for the ESER II Plan, which is the grant funds. So when we looked at the ESER funds, this is money, first of all, there are three ESER grants. There's ESER I, which was primarily for PPE, or protective personal equipment, and anything we needed, not anything, I wish it were anything, but certain things that we could utilize in order to move through the pandemic for the last year. So a lot of it was cleaning supplies and personal protective equipment. And then ESER II is more focused on what the federal government calls as learning loss, and I prefer to discuss it as unmet learning needs, because I don't think it's going to be loss. I think we'll have a learning recovery. And then there are ESER III funds, which is another pot of money, which we have discussed as potential for long-term projects. So the priority for ESER II has been, first, things that are tangible, things that we need for building and maintenance, that we know will benefit us for a long period of time, such as sidewalks, roof replacements, pass-throughs. And when I say pass-through, that means entries into some of our schools that we wanted to be a bit more secure, and we've been taking them year by year, because we haven't had the money to do it. Now, we'll be able to do the pass-through systems at Osapi, at the high school, and at the SAU office, the backup boiler at the middle school. The next level is materials, Fontis and Penel reading materials, social-emotional curriculum, steam supplies, meaning science, technology, arts, and math, music supplies, as far as instruments go, for instruments that students have not been able to purchase on their own. We have technology on the list. We are able to use this money to buy a couple of school buses, which will certainly relieve some of the financial burden on the district. The New Hampshire Learning Initiative, which I just spoke about earlier, summer bus drivers, which goes to our summer school program, which I'll talk about in a minute, and then curriculum and professional development. Summer program is a really important piece of this, because we know that this was not a typical year for our students. It was a very disruptive year, and it was a year certainly that no one planned for. So all of our schools are offering pretty robust summer school programs, which are five weeks, several hours per day, four days per week, and the financial expenditure is included in the ESER money. So what I'm looking for this evening, as far as ESER, is a motion to support the framework, particularly the positions that are required in order for us to implement the curriculum project that we'd like to implement. And that means that we would have a math project going on in every school for two years. We would also have a curriculum project going on in the high school for two years, and we would have three literacy project managers in our schools, as well as a nurse that would supplement. In Effingham, we don't have a full-time nurse, and as long as we are still in the transition phase of COVID, we are able to get the funds in order to have a full-time nurse in Effingham. So we would be recommending a full-time nurse for Effingham as well. So are there any questions about? I know that's a lot. If you look at the second page, it has this all drafted out in a spreadsheet, and it pretty much matches the amount of money available. Obviously, there's a little give and take, because some things might be a little more or a little bit less expensive, but it's pretty close.
I do think it's important to mention that the total money that we're talking about is $2,913,925, which is really very, very, very good funding for us to do a lot of this stuff that we need to do. So I think it's important to notice that.
And I should probably add here that although it's not on the agenda tonight, there will be an additional, a lot of money. There'll be over $6 million coming our way. And at the Building and Maintenance Committee, again, they'll discuss that more in detail, but we talked about larger-term projects that, again, we have to be careful. We can't supplant anything that's going on in the district currently. We have to supplement it, but there are some ways that we can do some things for the future that we might not be able to do if we didn't have this money. And in the long term, it will result in a benefit to the taxpayers. So there'll be more on that in the future.
Okay, yes, Jim Pittman.
I make a motion to accept the plan as presented.
Okay.
It's been moved by Jim Pittman and seconded by Dr. Jim. Any other questions on the ESER funding plan?
What is CB learning under CDC? What is that?
Professional Development?
No. What is that?
You're going to have to...
Under the item box, bottom left.
Item, it's...
Including...
Oh, including CB learning, right?
Curriculum-based?
Oh, curriculum-based.
Any other questions on that? Take a roll, call, vote on this. Krista? Dana?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Tim Eldridge? Wendy? Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Charlene? And chair votes, I as well. Excellent, thank you, Kathy.
All right, thank you. So the next item on the agenda is election results. As you all know, we had a little bit of a delay in the election, because the final results were not in until May 11th. So given that, I'm going to go over the results tonight. So if you look at Article I, that was school board member at large, and the person that prevailed in that election was Tim Eldridge with 1,446 votes. School member from New Durham, three-year term, and that is Stephanie King, and she is at 1,310 votes. School board member in Tuffton Borough, Jack Widmer, and that was 2,080 votes. School district moderator, Randy Walker, and Randy was, like Jack, unopposed, and that was 2,236 votes. Article II, which was the Turf Field Capital Reserve, and that was a yes, and the total number of votes was 1,735 votes. The no votes were 1,154. Article III, which is repairs and improvements, that was 2,007 votes for yes, and the nos were 892. And Article IV, the operating budget, was yes, votes were 1,869, and no votes for 1,006. Vaccinations. I was asked to put vaccinations under the superintendent's report, because some of our board members have gotten some questions about whether vaccinations would be required for either employment or our students. I was sort of surprised about the question, because the board has not discussed making vaccinations mandatory for staff or for students. Right now, the vaccinations, they're authorized on an emergency basis, and it would be certainly unusual for anyone to require vaccinations when they're still in an emergency status. At this point, the state is not requiring vaccinations of either students or staff, so there has not really been any discussion about that. But I think I'm making an assumption, and I would ask the board to just weigh in on this, that we would not be requiring vaccinations for students or staff.
Any input on this? I mean, it's certainly my opinion that we should not require vaccination. It's an individual choice. As much as I hope everyone does get vaccinated, that's, again, that's an individual choice, so I would not mandate it at all. Any other comments?
Agreed.
Certainly, the consensus of the board seems to be that we certainly are not going to make it mandatory to do vaccinations at this point in time. Thank you.
Okay. The next item is the Alumni Association. And unfortunately, the representatives were not able to be here tonight, but they did provide a letter for us. So it says, "Dear Superintendent Cuddy Egbert and GWRSD Board Members, the Kingswood Alumni Association is thankful for the opportunity to update you on our endeavors during this very challenging year. First of all, we would like to publicly welcome our two newest board members, Brendan Donahue, KRHS class of 2016, and Chris Nelson, KRHS class of 2018. Both men are now employed as teachers at the high school and have helped us this year with the scholarship decisions and planning for our biggest fundraiser, our annual golf tournament. The presentation of our 13th Annual KRHS Alumni Scholarship is scheduled for June 3rd at Kingswood Scholarship Night, which of course has already happened. Typically, the Alumni Association Scholarship at the senior banquet. Typically, we present, excuse me, the Alumni Scholarship at the senior banquet. This affords us the opportunity to address the entire graduating class and welcome them as alumni. Due to COVID-19 safety precautions, there will not be the traditional senior banquet this year, so we will award our scholarship at scholarship night instead. We would be presenting one scholarship of $1,000 to a member of the class of 2021. In our mission to encourage and support alumni at Kingswood Regional High School, we will also be awarding two more $1,000 scholarships to two members of the class of 2019. We reviewed 11 applications from Kingswood Regional High School alumni who graduated between the years of 2011 and 2020. Our biggest fundraiser for these scholarships is our annual alumni golf tournament. Due to COVID-19, we did not have a tournament in the fall of 2020. Plans are now underway for a 2021 Alumni Golf Tournament scheduled for Saturday, October 2nd. We will have many fun games and contests this year with multiple prizes to be won. Information regarding the golf, I think this is a little advertisement, information regarding the golf tournament will be posted on the Kingswood Regional High School Alumni Facebook page. The golf committee is working on finalizing our whole sponsor and team registration forms over the next couple of weeks. We will then start to actively look for teams and whole sponsors for the event, as well as donated prizes. The Kingswood Alumni Association will continue to be available for alumni communication and support. We continue to maintain an alumni library and storage for archival materials. Thank you for your continued support and interest. Sincerely, the KRHS Alumni Association Executive Board." And the officers are Christy Smith is the president, Lenny Moore is the vice president, Carrie Jane Kenniston is the secretary, and Deb Scully is the treasurer. So they would be looking for, at this time of year, or you generally make a motion to continue the financial support of $5,000 for the Alumni Association.
Right, I'd look for a motion to support the Alumni Association's request for the $5,000 funding that we provide each year.
Moved.
Moved by Dr. Jim. Seconded by Wendy. Okay, any questions on that? Okay, all those in favor then. Krista? Dana?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Stephanie? Tim? Wendy? Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Charlene? And chair votes, I as well. Thank you.
Hey, you're welcome. The next is the COVID-19 update. I know that probably everyone is anxious to hear about what the latest on masks is, but the COVID-19 CDC guidelines, I'm happy to say, no longer find screening necessary. And I would like to be able to drop the screening process immediately. We did check in with our COVID Advisory Task Force on this, and I would say that the task force was unanimous about dropping the screening. So I would be hoping that the board would support that.
Let's do a motion on that. I think that would be appropriate. I would entertain a motion that we drop the morning screening that's been going on in place. It's been moved by Wendy. Seconded by Stephanie. Any questions on that? Okay, all those in favor. Krista? Dana?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Tim?
Wendy?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Charlene? And chair votes, I as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, the CDC and DHHS, as well as the American Academy of Pediatrics, remain the same as they were at the last meeting, as far as their recommendations for masking for students indoors. You know, we have summer programming coming up, and I know that this is probably going to be a concern for parents. And we certainly will hold as many instructional activities as possible outside, during which students won't need to wear their masks. But what I would like, what I would like to ask the board is, if the guidelines change, either the CDC guidelines or the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services guidelines change, so that they are saying that we no longer, as a school system, need to be requiring masks indoors, that I'm able to implement that immediately? I know during the summer, it's really difficult to get people together and to have a quorum so that we can make a decision of this nature. And I think one of the things that you have looked at as a board is always to have a standard by which to make your decisions. If we have a standard from one of our preeminent organizations that says we no longer need to implement the mask mandate, I'd like to be able to follow that recommendation. So that's what I'd be requesting, and I know you're probably going to have a lot of conversation about that, so.
No, I support that, Kathy. You know, I mean, I think we've always had the three different areas that we have said that we support their guidance, and I support giving you that permission, you know, from us to change that, if they certainly change their orders as well.
So am I going to take that as a motion to...
Certainly, I would make a motion to...
Support giving the superintendent the authority to change the mask protocol during the summer, should the CDC, New Hampshire, DHHS guidelines change between now and...
Can I just ask a question about it? Would it be on a daily basis, or would it be one time, like, no longer required? Because I understand that the heat is sometimes back there, so...
Yeah, I mean, I would certainly expect that, you know, once the guideline is changed, that it'll, you know, if it's no longer a requirement by CDC and the New Hampshire DHHS, that that's not going to change back, you know, again, unless, you know, we don't have a crystal ball from that standpoint. So if something happens, they may wind up changing it back, and then it would be the superintendent, we give her the authority then to change it back, if certainly necessary.
Second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded to give the superintendent the authority to change the mask mandate if the CDC guidelines or the New Hampshire DHHS guidelines change. All those in favor. Krista? Dana?
Yes.
Jim Pittman?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Tim?
Wendy?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Charlene? And chair votes, I as well. Thank you.
Hey, thank you all. The next is legislative update, and this is...
No, that's all right. I'd just like to jump in a little bit. I've had a couple of requests from some parents that have homeschooled their children, because they like their children back in the classrooms in September. But again, they're concerned about what our mask protocol and what our COVID response might be in September. Obviously, we don't... Obviously, we don't have a crystal ball to know exactly where we're going to go between now and September. However, being the optimist that I am, I would think that September is going to be a school year that is very much back to a normal process. So I would hope that unless the pandemic turns the wrong direction, with additional vaccinations being done and the numbers continuing to move in the right direction, that by September, masks will probably not be required indoors. We'll still, I'm sure, maintain some of our cleaning protocols and air quality and all of that. But I think certainly between now and September, we keep our fingers crossed that, you know, things are continuing to move in the right direction, and next September will be much more of a normal school year. That's, again, my opinion. I, I don't have a crystal ball, but that's where I'm hoping that we're headed between now and September. So if that gives the homeschoolers any sense that, you know, we're heading in the right direction, hopefully that's, that's a good thing.
And Jack, I would anticipate that at the beginning of August, the Safety Committee would get together to issue new guidance for the coming school year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Next is legislative update, and right now, everything is focused on the governor's budget. There's been quite a, a bit of legislation that has been rolled into the budget, a lot of it without public comment, which I think, I don't think that's a great thing. So any of you that are really interested in what's happening in the legislature, you're going to want to look up the governor's budget, because there's some things that maybe you will like and some things that maybe you won't. So I would take a look. School Board Ethics. At this time in the year, with new board members, board members typically sign the school board ethics policy. And I think you've all have a copy in your board packet. This is very familiar to most of you, and I think we have an extraordinary board here that adheres to the ethics very faithfully, which is, you know, really wonderful for me, and I appreciate it. So I'm going to, I think Jack is starting it around, so if Jack, if you want to send it around.
I have the master form here, so I'll pass it around to make sure that everybody signs the master and brings that back to the clerk for, at the end of the meeting.
Thank you. And then the last item is the School Boards Association, and Jack, that's you.
Okay, I don't have too much to report, although I think I, I mentioned last time that our annual meeting, delegate assembly, is going to be in the fall this year as opposed to January. The fall makes a lot more sense because any of the resolutions that are presented that have any input on the legislative process, that's starting up at that point in time, the School Board Association then will have a time to get to the legislature to present the, the views of those, providing those new resolutions. In the past, unfortunately, when it was moved to January, the legislature has already met, they've set their agenda. So any of the resolutions that are presented by the School Board Association are more or less a year out of sync. They're not going to be presented until the following year. Moving it back to the fall, it makes a lot more sense. That's where it used to be years ago, and for some reason it was changed to January, but now it's back to fall, and I think we're going to keep it there. That's all I have under School Board Association at this point. Under correspondence. I think all, all of the board members received a, an individual note, which I, I'd just like to read. I think it's, it, it makes me feel very good about this. It says, Dear Mr. Widmer, and I know each board member got one, as we look back on 2020, we recognize all of your hard work that you put into our education and well-being. You have done so, done so, so much for our community and future. We can never thank you enough, and that's the Kingswood Regional High School Student Body. And, and all the board members received a copy of that type of note, which I thought was very nice. And we also received a, a card from the staff of, the members of Effingham Elementary School Staff. Members of the elementary school staff would like to thank the Governor Wentworth Administration and School Board for all they have done this year to maintain the safety of our students and staff. Your continued commitment to make thoughtful, research-based decisions throughout the pandemic is, is appreciated. We feel fortunate to have such thoughtful and compassionate leaders at the helm to guide us through this unique time. Our hope is that you will find the time to quietly enjoy the summer months ahead with gratitude and appreciation, and that's signed by the entire staff at the Effingham School. Thank you for that. And we have another note. And we had two notes of sympathy that we sent, one to Peg Stevens on the passing of her father, and one to Alicia Hernandez on the passing of her aunt. Okay. Okay, moving forward to committee reports, academic affairs. Wendy, is that you?
I want to thank Kathy for doing the hard, hard lifting for me. I want to say that myself, Krista, and Tim met this evening with Ellen and John from the New Hampshire Learning Initiative product, they're from a nonprofit here in New Hampshire. And they're going to really help us, like Kathy said. I think the district obviously recognizes the unfinished learning that the kids have had to experience for the past year and a half due to the pandemic. I certainly want to personally thank the, all the teachers and parents and the administration in the district for doing the most amazing job that they possibly could during this difficult time. And we recognize that, you know, the students and the teachers need the shot in the arm, no offense, to get, you know, back into learning and, and come back and, you know, feel empowered. And so with that being said, the New Hampshire Learning Initiative, we're going to, we'd like to retain them to work with the K through 12 curriculum and work with them on the competencies, work with the, you know, in, do more project-based learning, and that's why we did approve some additional positions to help implement them, like Kathy said, in a more expedient manner. And they're really going to work with our teachers, the leadership team, again, to look at our curriculum and really elevate that to the next level. And so like Kathy said, we've, as you know, we've tried to enrich math and reading over the past several years. Again, I think, once we had this money from the federal government, this will really give us an opportunity to leverage some training, some project-based learning with the teachers, having some extra, you know, boots on the ground and really implement this. And I think, you know, talking with Krista as a former educator, you know, she seemed to, you know, really embrace it and really, I think, it would be a really good process for us as a district. And again, I, I think this will be really good, and I think the kickoff, again, was scheduled, I think, for the summer. And it's really just to kind of look at, how do, how do we teach the curriculum? And then evaluate the students' work and the rigor and the competencies. And then, like Krista said, you know, to evaluate the process in which, did it work? How do we enrich it? You know, to really, Krista is much more eloquent as a teacher to kind of understand the way that she was saying it. But just listening to kind of how we can enrich it with the curriculum. I feel like the, the district is, when we got this federal money, is really putting this money to good use for our kids. And I was, I am extremely pleased at how we're going to expend this money for the kids and, like Kathy said, for the unfinished learning. And I'm excited for this, for the teachers, the administration, and especially the students. I'm excited for this to start this summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Building and Maintenance, and maybe this was the minutes that I thought we didn't have, but that's okay, we, we don't have to go backwards. I, I think, do we have an update from Building and Maintenance? Jim?
Building and Maintenance met earlier today. It was Jim Pittman, Dr. Jim, myself, and we met with Kathy O. and Kathy. And we discussed, again, the SO grant and what piece of that grant would be used and utilized for the projects going forward. So we, they've already been kind of spelt out earlier in the meeting. We also discussed the solar project at Effingham Elementary and reports from Barrington Power. The, the whole project was kicked off, well, not, the project was turned on, I should say, in November. And unfortunately, because we were headed into winter, the projections were a little low. But spring came and the sunlight came out, and now we're, we're a tad bit above with the projection. So the folks from Barrington Power have pretty much assured us that we'll, we'll be in line of where we need to be. And we also discussed putting up an informational plaque at the solar project site, just telling about the, the whole solar project itself and giving information on how the solar works and how the power gets to the school. So that will be put in place. And we also discussed maintenance projects that will be going on over the summer and roofs, the pass-throughs, windows, hot water pump, and possibly compressors. So lots and lots of stuff that will be happening for the summer to get us ready for the fall. And a couple other quick things that we had discussed was, Dr. Jim reported that Brookfield has signed a contract for broadband. So not that that was necessarily anything under the privy of building and maintenance, but it's good to report that they're going to be getting broadband. That'll certainly help the, the students, especially if they have to do online learn. And then we also discussed Culvert and a catch basin issue out here at McManus Road and Route 28. So that will be a project in the works, potentially. And just the summer air circulation in the buildings will continue as it has. That's about it.
Thank you, Tim. I have nothing for human resources tonight, and nothing for finance. Advanced planning, you can see down below, tomorrow night is the Senior Athlete Awards Night at the Arts Center. And on Friday, which is new for us this year, high school graduation will be at 6:00 PM out on the field. And, you know, barring rain, which, the rain date is going to be Saturday then, hopefully at 10:00 AM, but I think 6 o'clock Friday is going to be sunny in the high, low, low 70s, high 60s, low 70s, which is going to be great for graduation. And then on 21st and 22nd, all the sixth, sixth grade and the eighth grade promotions. Okay, now it's time for a public input. 15 minutes for public input. Again, five minutes per person if possible. And not that, I, I certainly don't want to get anybody angry, but I would like residents of the Governor Wentworth School District to speak first, and then anyone from out of town can certainly speak afterwards.
My name is Jessica Williams, and I'm from Wolfboro. And the first thing I'm going to say is, I understand why you're saying that, and I know Brody's put that little bug in your ear, but that's actually in violation of the statute. I know you don't have to let anyone speak at these meetings, but if you are letting people speak, it's any member of the public.
We are going to allow every member of the public to speak that wants to speak. I'm just asking that the, the people from the Governor Wentworth School District speak first.
But they don't have to do that, so. All right, I have a couple of things that I want to talk to you about tonight. I'm surprised you didn't read my little notes that I sent to you, because there were several this week. You read these other notes that are just applauding yourselves, but maybe you should read the ones that aren't applauding you, so that we can actually have a real conversation. First thing, I'm going to object to the minutes from the May 10th meeting. I know I already sent you an email about this, and the reason is, is you unlawfully, procedurally, in an incorrect manner, entered non-public. The, the minutes do not reflect that error, and I would say it's in your best interest, not ours, to correct that. And the reason is, is if there was a lawsuit at some point against his school board, they're going to enjoin all of the things that you've done wrong, and if you correct that one, it won't be on the list. So you may want to just reflect your minutes accurately, and if you're going to sit up there and approve the minutes, you probably want to approve correct minutes, because then you're all complicit in approving falsified documents. So I'm going to ask that one of you does the right thing up there and says, yes, we made a mistake, let's fix it. It's just a one sentence that you'd have to add to your minutes, and it would fix the problem.
We have a, we had a legal opinion at the minute to find the way they are.
Did you have that in a non-public session, or when did you have that done?
We, we called the attorney, our district attorneys, and they said that the minutes, the way they were written, are perfectly legal the way they are.
Because they don't have to be written verbatim.
You can talk to your attorneys and have them.
I'm not going to pay my attorneys to fix your errors. I've already done that. Thank you. So you actually closed your meeting at 8:52, which is incorrect. If you look at the timestamps on the videos, it's wrong. So I'm just asking you to be accurate, that's all. It shouldn't be a big deal. This is not the first time you've done it. At the deliberative session, Randy Walker adjourned the meeting, and then you entered non-public unlawfully. It's procedural mistake, is what Kathy called it. But you know what?
I've already explained that to you before, that Randy Walker adjourned the deliberative session. He did not adjourn the meeting. He adjourned the deliberative session.
You took a vote to adjourn the meeting.
Our meeting was still in force, and at that point, we went into non-public session. He adjourned the deliberative session, not the meeting itself.
You took a motion to adjourn the meeting. It was a mistake. Anyway, I think if I were speeding down Main Street and Mr. Dean Rondo pulled me over and I just said it was a mistake, I probably would still get a ticket. So there are certain procedures that you're supposed to follow up here, and you should do it. It's the right thing to do. That's part of a board member, part of your ethics policy should include following the rules. I mean, the New Hampshire School Board Association has things every single month that you can go to and take classes. If you're not sure how this board's supposed to function, you should figure it out. Also, Kathy, it was a lie when you sent me an email today saying that this, the board's secretary does not use WCTV transcripts, YouTube transcripts, to create minutes. They do. In fact, when I filed a right-to-no request with your office, and you are the custodian of these records, you actually gave me a transcript of the YouTube video. So when you told me today in an email that you don't use the YouTube videos, you actually do, because you sent them to me in a right-to-no request, correct?
Jessica, let, let me respond to that. Actually, what I said was that, let me just look, because of course I responded to this in a very lengthy letter.
I can read it, I have it right here in front of me.
Sure, you can do that.
All right, let's do it.
So. The primary source for the meeting minutes is the audio recording and the secretary's notes. Now, that doesn't mean that we don't have access to WCTV records, and we sent them to you doing beyond due diligence to make sure that you had everything. That's the reason that you got a copy of those notes.
Actually, you didn't do your due diligence, because when I asked for other information, you neglected to provide that to me in violation of 91A. So you actually said that, because my, my con, my issue is with that Charlene Seibel sits on the WCTV board, you told me that it's a requirement by that board that a school board member is on that. And I actually read the bylaws today, because I wanted to make sure I wasn't wrong, and I wasn't. It says that a school board member or designee. So I would say that because the school board is using WCTV transcripts to produce minutes for the board, there's a conflict for Charlene Seibel to sit on both sides. So if we're going to talk about ethics, let's talk about it. You can't have it both ways. It doesn't look good for the board. No comment, I'm sure. That's fine. Next. All right. Excuse me. Excuse me. So yes, I'm the person that complained, saying, thank you, that I couldn't hear you, Jack, when you took your oath. And it's actually, I wasn't really complaining necessarily about the oath itself, I'm just saying that it was inaudible to the public, which is a requirement. So if the meeting is inaudible to the public, that's problematic. So in the future, I'm just asking that if one takes an oath up here, I think we would all appreciate to be able to hear it. We couldn't hear you.
And I appreciate that. I think going forward, to make it simple for everyone, next year, when we take the oath, when the new members take oath of office, we'll do it individually, and that way we won't have an issue with that.
Thank you, that would be appreciated. Now, as you did take an oath, there are a couple things that you took an oath to. One was the Constitution of New Hampshire, and the other one was New Hampshire state law. So a couple things I want to go over is that we do have a Bill of Rights. And when Kathy says that I'm, that you guys made a mistake, that, you know, it's just a little mistake, we should just look past it, I just want to read you something and hope that you all can understand it. This is Article 38 of our Bill of Rights. "Social virtues. A frequent recurrence to the fundamental principles of the Constitution and a constant adherence to justice, moderation, temperance, industry, frugality, and all the social virtues are indispensably necessary to preserve the blessings of liberty and good government. The people ought, therefore, to have a particular regard to all those principles and the choice of their officers and representatives. And they have the right to require of their lawgivers and magistrates an exact and constant observance of them in the formation and execution of the laws necessary for the good administration of government." So I know you probably feel like I'm picking on you, and I'm picking at little things, but these things matter, because procedure matters, doing the right thing matters, and all of you have so much power up there, but it's only power that we give to you. And I'm just asking you to follow the rules. Also, I've been looking around and it looks like you're not flying the New Hampshire flag, either on school property or below the United States flag. And you actually, in your oath, you said that you would follow the New Hampshire laws. So you're in violation of 18917. You must fly the flag, the New Hampshire flag, on school property at every single school. So I'll be looking for that tomorrow. The last couple of things here, I know I'm probably running out of time, and I'm sure that people want to speak, but I just want to say there are probably some more conflicts of interest on this board. If anyone here has a wife, a husband, a stepchild that is an employee of the school district, and they might want to consider recusing themselves from certain votes, and I'll be looking for that as well. Also, Jack, it's highly improper for you to be lobbing motions to people on the board. It's kind of pathetic, really. So if all of you have any sort of integrity or care about the legacy you leave behind, you might want to just make your own motions and not have Jack force feed them to you. Kind of embarrassing. Last thing is the ESER funds. I have a question about those. Actually, it's not the last thing, but ESER funds, when do you have to spend these funds by? And if you're creating all these new positions, these are permanent positions and therefore permanent increases to the budget, what's that look like?
They're not permanent positions, Jessica. They're project managers, and they're limited to two years or, or as long as the funds exist.
Okay. So there's no permanent positions being created?
No.
None, zero. Okay. And then the last thing is the masks. I'm just, I mean, I think everyone here is just so disappointed that this board is taking guidance and saying they're rules. They're not. The CDC does not make rules. They're not a rule-making body. They're, they're an advisory committee, and they're making, they're making guidelines for the entire country. We're in Little Wolfboro, New Hampshire, we're in the woods here, we're lucky, but we have 47 people, children, in the entire state of New Hampshire in our school system out of almost 200,000 kids. Forty-seven have a positive diagnosis for COVID presently. This is less than a third of a percent of our student body population for the state. Why is this board not communicating about this a little bit more? Why are we not letting these kids take their masks off, at least in the classroom? Maybe if they're going to be passing in the hallways, can we do something so that they can sit there and have a normal last through weeks of school? Somebody?
Yeah, the only, the only response, or the response I will give to you on that is, the CDC, that, those are national guidelines, but the New Hampshire DHHS are not national guidelines. They're specific to New Hampshire, and the New Hampshire DHHS guidelines still maintain that masks need to be present in the classroom.
But they're not. This is up to you. Manchester's not wearing them, Wyndham's not wearing them, lots of school districts are not wearing them. Lots of school districts are being sued right now because of what people like you are doing.
You were talking about guidelines, and I'm just referring to, you mentioned the CDC guidelines.
They're guidelines.
I'm just referring to the DHHS guidelines.
They're not laws, they're not rules. So.
They're guidelines, and we said right in the beginning that we're following the DHHS guidelines as well as the CDC guidelines.
You didn't say that from the beginning.
This board has not voted to not follow those guidelines.
So what if we just tell our students to not wear masks? What are you going to do, going to kick them out of school? What if enough of them don't come to school?
Right now, they're required by, by our guidelines, they're required.
What's the punishment for not wearing a mask? Where do you have the authority to make that rule, first of all? Please cite the statute. You don't. And this is a mistake. Once again, this board is making a mistake.
We only have a couple of minutes left.
Glad I got up here, then. I'm Kelly Colby Seavy, and I have lived in Wolfboro since 1981. As a wife, a daughter, a mother, a grandmother, and a school leader, I have been pleased that your decisions this year have been guided by science, that you have consulted with experts and made changes as the CDC and DHHS have made new recommendations. I have appreciated that you broadcasted your meetings to keep us safe, but I know there have been many meetings where you have not felt the support of the greater community, and it is there. Many of us are here tonight to tell you that we support and thank you. So thank you for your hours of volunteerism, your patience, and your perseverance through these hard times.
Why wasn't school called off today?
What was the question?
Why wasn't school called off today?
It was, it was a decision that.
Jack, I'm sorry.
I said, why was school not called off today if we have online?
Name, name and, name and town, please.
Excuse me?
Your name and your town.
Paul DeRocher, Wolfboro.
Thank you.
I just had a conversation with my daughter, and she had a really hot time in school today with the heat. I know there was a number of schools that canceled today, and I was just curious. And if you're, is there any plan on tomorrow being canceled?
Paul, there, there were very, I'm sorry. Paul, there were, I don't know how many schools you heard of that were canceled, but certainly none of the schools in our region were canceled. It certainly, it certainly was a hot day today.
Wouldn't it make sense to have school canceled?
Excuse me, I'd like to finish, Paul. It certainly was a hot day today, and we recognize, just like on a snow day, the parents have the right to, if you decide that you want to keep your children home because you feel it's too hot, especially with masks, then that's fine, but school will proceed tomorrow.
Okay, one, one more speaker, and then we're going to have to go into non-public.
Tisha O'Keefe, Wolfboro, New Hampshire. I just want to say it was super cute, but really oppressing people, not very flattering. Kathy, thank you for today. So you and I spoke on, on a call, and I hung up reflecting, our call was respectful, it was cordial, we spoke to each other as humans, and maybe even more important, as mothers, and actually, we joked mama bears. I appreciate that you can respect my point of view, you even empathize with it. And so, you know, I could have written a lot. I know if we had more time, people would be talking about the Fauci emails that came out through the Freedom of Information Act. There would be a whole lot that would be talked about right now. I want to focus on what we're seeing back here. Last time I spoke at the, at the school meeting, it was followed by a Karen, and yes, that's really her name, who decided it was okay to post on the Wolfboro Community Board that I was a ringleader for the anti-mask gang. She wrote, "The count for the anti-mask gang is now almost 40, but most are the quiet types. They like the posts of their fellow gang members, but don't comment, most, don't comment much at all. As you have likely deduced by now, there are 10 to 12 vocal commenters, including three hyper-vocal commenters. We can surmise that Jessica, Ronnie, and Tisha are the leaders of this self-anointed group of experts about masks and what is best for our children during this pandemic." After several degrading adjectives to describe us gang members, she continues, "They make statements like, 'You don't know anything about me.'" And therein lies the problem, you don't know anything about me, Karen, and I don't know if you're here, I hope you're listening. You don't know my heart. You claim you do, but that's the problem with your type. You're dead-set on your narrow-minded perspective and pushing your ill-conceived will on the rest of us who dare think differently. Let me tell you who I am. I'm a mom of a 12 and a 14-year-old in this district. As someone who grew up a ward of the state of Rhode Island most of my childhood, I'm an advocate of children. And something you really won't like, I'm a proud conservative who believes in life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. I believe in freedom, something your type hates. Why am I even bothering with you is beyond me, but the offer still stands. Feel free to come have a conversation with my face, or to my face. Don't worry, we can stand six feet apart if that makes you feel better." I mentioned in the meeting, in the last meeting, and I can't stress it enough, enough, I will not be intimidated, I will not be silenced, none of us will. In fact, our gang is not going anywhere, and we're only growing in numbers. When I spoke at the last board meeting advocating for ma, making masks optional, I sat down to over a dozen text messages from people who watched me speak. Two were liberals, another a teacher, a few others who aren't political at all. My point is, as much as we know this has been made political, this isn't a left versus right issue. Making masks, masks a choice is a humanity issue. This is a bipartisan issue. Parents are fed up and most recognize, unless you're Karen, unless you're Karen, sorry, that really was not intentional, that this is insanity. "We gave you more than two weeks, you asked. Numerous school districts in New Hampshire have made masks optional. It's time for Governor Wentworth Regional School District to do the same. Transmissions are down, kids are not super-spreaders, teachers who want to be vaccinated can, enough is enough." And the last thing I'll say, there's two things. So I wrote a bunch of notes here. I heard unfinished learning, learning recovery. Really what that means is damage control. We can't measure what has been done to our children. We will not be able to measure maybe even decades from now, and some people behind me may laugh at that. There's, it's not a laughing matter. It's the fact. Maybe not in our school district, district, some kids that are at risk, maybe, you know, we're, I don't, I don't think we're as at risk, but there are kids all across the country. So to stand up and laugh and to think any of this is funny and to call this a gang is disgusting, and I'm just fed up, and many people are. The other thing that I would mention is, is we talk about DHHS and CDC. The New Hampshire Catholic schools have announced their mask policy for the coming school year already. They are making masks optional, they're getting rid of masks. So it can be done. And, and to also point out, they were first to teach stu, to teach students in person, and they were the first to ensure normalcy. And here they are, now announcing that they're, they're not going to have masks for the fall. So I just ask that you really, and again, Kathy, I do appreciate our call today. We've got to get these kids back to normalcy. There is nothing wrong with me not wanting my child to wear a mask, especially on a hot day today. I kept my son out of school today. My, my ex-husband and I, we actually agreed, which is something that's shocking altogether. But anyways, we agreed to keep him out of school today. So, you know, we're not being unreasonable, we have a different perspective, it's different than, than what a lot of people, you know, hear maybe. That doesn't matter, that doesn't diminish what we're saying. So I'm just asking you to really, really consider masks, you know, making masks optional, especially, we're, we're coming up on summer school. So I, I just beg of you guys to really, really consider making masks optional moving forward. And, and I, I don't know what chance we have of making that happen, but, and I know I just said it, I'll say it again, Kathy, I do appreciate the call today, it definitely made me feel better. I know it's been a while you were there, you know, and I almost started talking about what I went through with, with my oldest son and him going through the school district, and it was just too emotional, so I, I deleted it and, and decided, but the fact that you asked about him, really, it, it made me feel good. So I appreciate that. And yeah, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Tisha, you're very welcome, and ultimately, that's, that's what we're all about here, is each individual student. So thank you for mentioning it.
Yes, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, I want to take a motion now to go into non-public under RSA 91A, semicolon, 3, paragraph 2, for a legal and a personnel matter.
Second.
Moved by Wendy, seconded by Tim. All those in favor? Krista? Dana?
Yes.
Tim Pittman?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Wendy?
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Charlene? Chair votes, I have spoken in non-public. Thank you very much for coming.
Yeah, we'd like to ask if anyone would like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn, Jack.
Okay, motion made by Wendy.
Seconded.
Seconded by Tim. All those in favor of adjourned in the meeting, Krista?
Yes.
Dana?
Hi.
Jim Pittman?
Hi.
Thank you. Stephanie?
Yes.
Uh, Tim?
Yes.
Wendy?
Yes.
Dr. Jim?
Yes.
Charlene?
Chair votes, I will adjourn. Thank you.